Don Redlett, Mike Gaughan, Chair. Paul Wilson, Dick Lewis, John Kelly, and Bob Dragon's alternate. We're going to have Paul step in and be voting member tonight.
I will be voting, thank you.
There is a sign-in sheet at the back of the room for those that are planning on talking today. Let's see, are there any general public comments that is not on the agenda for today? Okay, brings us to item number four. We are going to make a small change to the agenda. We're looking to, for a motion to bring item B first and then have item A after. We have a motion. Would there be any discussion first?
Make a motion when we address item 4B before it's voted.
For second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Yes.
Now that we've gone to administrative matters and we have rearranged the agenda on item four, I have a request from the applicant for item 4B, which is the two-lot commercial subdivision on Tenny Mountain Highway. Parcel IDs 212-46 and 47, Riverside Landing. I believe each of you have a copy of the letter for their applicant. I will read it briefly. "On behalf of the applicant Riverside Landing LLC," this is from the engineer Jeff Lewis at North Point, "I am writing to formally request that the planning board table this subject application until August 16th, 2012 Planning Board Meeting. This will provide us sufficient time to submit duplicates of our state permit applications, which we understand need to be included with the subdivision application in order for it to be a complete application. In addition, we are in receipt of a review letter from the town's consultant engineer that identifies several technical issues with the engineering design that need to be addressed. It is our intent to address these review comments and submit revised plans along with copies of the state permit applications prior to the July 31st application deadline for the August 16th meeting. We then hope to be in good shape for acceptance of this application at the August meeting so we can advance immediately into a public hearing. Thank you for your consideration, et cetera." Jeffrey Lewis, P.E.
Thank you, Sharon. So at this point, given that letter from the applicant, I would look for a motion to continue this case, which is 212-046/47 for the two-lot subdivision until August 16th, 2012. Is there a motion?
Could I just ask a clarifying question? On the agenda, it talks about two-lot commercial subdivision?
Mm-hmm.
And Engineer Lewis's letter talks about site plan application. Is that just a typo on his part, or?
Can I say what you're looking? The same.
His letter?
His letter, the one you just read. Yeah, versus the one you just read. Says subdivision.
It's just, Henry, that's clerical error on his letter. It's a clerical error. Should say subdivision, because the body of the letter speaks to subdivision. I didn't even see that, I was too busy with it. Yep, so it's a clerical error. I can bring that to his attention and have him submit a corrected copy for the file or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'll just, one observation, not necessarily on the merits of the application, but it seemed like a lot of the application was sort of site plan oriented as opposed to subdivision oriented. And I just kind of wonder, I mean, I think the board, when we get to the 16th, is going to have to kind of look at that a little bit. I mean, a lot of the comments from Mike McNally were, you know, fairly very specific, you know, site plan oriented. And, you know, are they mixing something up that maybe we need to dissect into two separate distinct parts?
I don't, I don't think that's the case. I think when they, perhaps when they get the permits submitted and we have more stuff to look at, we can actually separate it out. But because this is phase one of several anticipated phases, I know how difficult it is, and I understand exactly what you're saying. We strive to keep it, you know, within certain parameters and not stray into two other fields or anything, literally. But because I believe from looking at the plans this time, they want to possibly do a lot of the topography and grading and stuff like that. If not in one fell swoop, at least on a large scale. So it's hard to look at it in total isolation. We're just going to have to put our blinders on when we need to. There was that aspect and also the fact that we didn't have any applications from them for the two state permits, so our town engineer couldn't give us any analysis on that and I couldn't convey it to you. And altogether, it was not.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of issues at play here, so.
Exactly, exactly. So.
Alright, so we need a motion. First by John Kelly, is there a second? Mr. Redlett, all those in favor of continuing this application until August 16th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that passes.
So could you just please rejoin into the group of tenants, North Country Council and Chair?
So, the application will be reheared in a public hearing on August 16th, 2012. Most other words noted. The letters would be notified.
No, this is their oral notification, it's a secondary notification. I'm sorry, Tim, that's the way procedural ball bounces. But for the TV audience and anyone else who might want information on the actual meeting, as far as we know, at this point in time, it will be held on August 16th, which is our regular date.
So that brings us to administrative matters, item four, which will be item two, which will be item B now, which is the minor residential one-lot subdivision, 280 Old Hebron Road, PID 222-030. You have?
I have a representative here for the applicant, Mr. Boss of FourCo.
Alright. And I'm assuming everybody has the 11x17 maps. Please state your name and. Tom Hahn with FourCo LLC in Runway.
Hi, Mr. Hahn.
A couple of minor revisions there that we had talked about.
Is that by L. Fobbers where they're logging now? Cutting it out?
Yes. Okay. Picture? Thank you. This is, last January, we were before you with a lot line adjustment between the Fobbers and the Martin Trust. And this is now a subdivision of the 12 acres that was the subject of that lot line adjustment. It's fairly straightforward. The parent lot is 24.38 acres. It has the Martins' house and barn and pond, outbuildings, et cetera, on it. One new lot of 5.04 acres is proposed to be subdivided from the total. A little over 200 feet of road frontage on Old Hebron Road. The parent lot after subdivision will be 19.34 acres. There's good site distance for driveway at this location. It's actually, the new house site on this five acres is actually on a location of a former log landing. So there's actually, had been a temporary access there before. It's basically, it's at the height of land on Old Hebron Road. Their septic design is in process and soils are suitable. And actually, I've gotten, obtained some new information from the septic designer. So the NRCS soil type for the entire 12 acres was a Tunbridge Lyman rockout crop, which for the size of new lot that's being proposed was acceptable anyway. The soil type based upon the perk test locations where the septic system would be is actually Monadenoc Harmon, so it's even a better soil. There's a couple of minor revisions to the plan since the application was submitted. Sharon had asked that we add in the survey error of closure, which we have done. I simply added the septic construction approval number for the existing leach field below the Martins' house. And added in the new soil type information as a result of the septic design. So those are the only revisions that have been made. And that's all I have. So at this point, we can get an update from the town planner on whether the application are recommendations?
It's definitely complete, and I recommend that you accept it. To be discussed, and then I'll tell you a little more about what I've learned.
Unless there's any discussion, I could entertain a motion to accept the application as complete.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Kelly, do it a second. Mr. Roach, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we have accepted the application, now we can move to actually hearing, and I will ask, not public hearing, but I will ask Sharon to give us an update.
I just wanted to say that all the department heads weighed in on this and they have absolutely no concerns. So that's a bit of a gold star on how this design fits into reality. And the applicant has already, I believe this is correct, put in the pins from the lot line adjustment and submitted a deed that the town has the record of. So the previous endeavor that you folks approved earlier this year has been brought to fruition. So technically speaking, this property is good to go for a minor subdivision, one-lot subdivision.
Is there anything that you wanted to add at this point before we put it up for a discussion and public hearing?
Nope, I have nothing further to add.
Alright, then it is 6:44, and I open up a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone opposed to the application? Anything of a general nature? Alright, so at 6:44, I will close the public hearing and bring it to the board, and we can, if there's some discussion, we can talk about other laws, we can entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Mr. Kelly makes a motion to approve the application.
I second it.
And we have a second by Mr. Wilson. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, all those in favor of approving the application as stated by Mr. Hahn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it is passed.
So Tom, you'll be coming in with a lawyer at some point and get that and copy signed and, you know, litter also, right?
So that needs to sign as an application.
Okay, alright, sure. That's fine, we've got the check.
Thank you. That brings us to item number five, correspondence.
Nothing at this point. Some members of the board did ask, just before we started, asked for some more copies of all the previous paperwork decisions or notices of approval, everything, for Lowe's case. So I'll be getting that out to you. We'll be updating the paperwork to step by I. Just please don't throw away anything I've given you already. We'll just sort it out as it goes along.
Okay, that brings us to item number six. I'm finished, another business. Sharon and I talked about the master plan, the work that we've been doing over the last few months. And we have plenty of time to get the master plan done. There is a 10 to 15-year window?
Five to 10.
Five to 10.
The five doesn't occur until next year.
The fifth year doesn't. So we did our last update four years ago, then it sounds like.
Well, it was, yeah, and that was protracted.
And we have six years, really, of window at this point. Our master plan seems to be okay at the moment, and we don't see a reason to rush it right now. We've got some preliminary work, and so I'm kind of bringing it up to the board here on what you would, if there's any other further discussion, or if you think that maybe it might serve the board better to wait if we've got a big plan on our table right now. Mr. Kelly?
The only thing I have to add is that, at the time they did the master plan, they zeroed in on Main Street. That was their main concern. And I think that the board has an obligation to try to have maybe a master plan for Tenny Mountain Highway. So far, there's so many buildings up there that are not really too awfully attractive, and people go through there all the time. And some time ago, we had a meeting saying that, after CVS came into effect, said, "We are going to stop this individual businesses coming in there and making a total composite of a larger business." Because the bank came in and then CVS came in, and at that point, it had to do with mitigation. And I think we're going right straight down the same road as we did before, because now we've got these two little places, and they're going to be able to skip by a lot of the regulations and requirements that Lowe's had because they were so big. But all of a sudden, they're going to have two, three more small businesses, and eventually you're going to have the same impact as what Lowe's might have had if this new venture does go through. So I think we'd better have stuck back and say, okay, what did we say a few months ago about having a total, I'm going to call it master plan, but don't get confused with the whole thing, master plan of the whole development, if somebody is going to, if once they develop or buy some land out there, that they should have a total picture of what that's going to be. Is it going to be, is it going to be bigger places or smaller places or just what? And I don't think that's going to, I don't think we've got the.
You're talking about mitigation, right?
Right.
You're talking about mitigation.
Not. Mitigation or any plan, any of the plan for a large development. Because the thing is that we're going to continue to have these little small businesses go in, we're going to have to have the same services and everything else, and we're going to have just more hodgepodge of buildings out there unless somebody can tell us that not what is coming in, but whether it's going to be large tracks that they're going to try to develop and sell, or whether it's going to be a bunch of small nickel-and-dime places that are going to add maybe even more traffic than a big place is. Like Lowe's, you go in and you go in and there's a few people in there all the time. Now, if you have a retail place, like some fast food place, you're going to have a tremendous amount of traffic coming in and going out. So, you know, if you've got two or three of those there, you've got more problems than you would have if a large place came in. I just, I hate to see Tenny Mountain keep going down the path that we've allowed it to go down, because as they state, there's 27,000 people going up that road and up and down that road every day. And it's not too good a representation of Plymouth, because we've got a beautiful college or university and everything that's stuck downstreet, and nobody ever sees that unless they're going to college. And people going by there see, you know, the granite place and the new hall and everything like that.
I know Sharon wanted to address some of those concerns, I'm going to.
Well, I just, just to kind of bring the, and John's right, bring the discussion back to a starting point, I just wanted to remind the board that, and this goes back to kind of putting the master plan aside, not on our shelf, just to the side for a moment, because I think we, a little bit the cart before the horse. The 2003 corridor plan, that's the word you're looking for, quarter plan. Corridor plan for Route 25, Tenny Mountain Highway is going to be 10 years old very soon. And in my opinion, it's time to go back and look at it again. I think we're getting, we've had a lot of development, which is wonderful, out there. I don't think you want scattered development or premature development, and we certainly don't want any more traffic constraints. And we're almost to the point where we're having traffic problems. As everyone knows, you cannot, for the life of you, make a left-hand turn out of Smith Bridge Road, and you could barely make a right-hand turn. I, just, we need to look at, we need to plan. We need to plan. So my suggestion would be, let's do a corridor study of sorts, or update the one that was done by North Country Council, doesn't necessarily have to be them. But I think this is a very important time for us to look at what has transpired in the last 10 years, what we've got for parameters out there for growth or to restrain growth, and what the concerns are. And then, because I know that the last master plan spoke to Tenny Mountain Highway as being one of the most important aspects of future growth in Plymouth. So I just don't think we can go ahead and start saying thus and such about an update to the master plan while something's going on that we really need to pay some close attention to. So that's all I have to say.
So that was. Glad you brought that up. John, Mr. Godson.
I'd like to reaffirm Sharon's comments and offer a two-part observation. The first against, or strengthen what she said, it is about nine years old. And the major decisions, whether they came to fruition or not, since 2003, that's Carter Study was pulled out, whether it was looking at Walmart, looking at Wilson Tire, any of the new developments that were occurring along there. Very often, I'm not sure that some of the smaller developments didn't always fall in line with the general concepts that were identified for developing that transportation corridor. I would also offer that we've had now a number of years of experience with a roundabout in the town of Plymouth. There was considerable concern about the roundabouts that were proposed in that 2003 study by some of the businesses along Tenny Mountain Highway. Majority of those businesses, Mr. Excuse me, a fair number, if not a majority, of those businesses have since seen the performance of roundabouts in other towns. And organizations such as Harris Furniture, which was really opposed to development of roundabouts, will now support that concept. So I like the idea of revisiting that. I think it opens an opportunity to take a look at a decision that was made in 2007 about the continued use of streetlights, which is more expensive and also does not lead to a calming of traffic on Tenny Mountain Highway. So I think Sharon's suggestion is one that just fits well with what's happened over the last seven years since that study came out.
May I just also quickly say that's a golden opportunity for us as a spinoff to look at our site plan slash, you know, getting to design specifications, if we decide to go to that. But that's where you get the helter-skelter, everything looks different. It's confusing and crazy. So I think it's a natural progression.
Yes, Mr. Kelly?
One other thing is, if somebody hasn't noticed it, there's a 25-acre piece of land next to Harris Brothers that says "for sale." And if it is for sale, then I would assume there's not somebody going to put it into an environmental easement. I assume, being down on Tenny Mountain Highway, they will be building on that. Besides that, Home Depot was going to go in behind Harris Brothers, so that has a potential of a sale, not for home people, but a future sale of that land. So probably there'll be land down there, go to bad, that probably will be developed. One thing, is there a speed limit that these roundabouts are? I had understood from, in Massachusetts, anything over 40 miles an hour that they're in.
I am aware of roundabouts in other states such as Colorado, which are dual-lane roundabouts, are much larger. They're 50 miles an hour.
But that's like a traffic circle.
It's still a calming effect, yes. It's not like a traffic circle. There is a distinct physical difference between a traffic circle and a roundabout.
I need to put some radius, turning radius, I think.
Are significantly different. Roundabout is designed to calm traffic.
I think bringing this up possibly at our first Thursday meeting next month to talk about Tenny Mountain Highway, and would we have to bring someone in to talk about what was done nine years ago, or would we just discuss that on our own?
I found the book, the study, and I want to go through it and see who did it, North Country Council.
Could you give us a report?
I could give you a report, and I can, hopefully there's an executive summary or something, and anyone's welcome to look at it, I do have two copies.
Is it safe to assume it's large?
Yeah.
So rather than.
But it could be fluffy.
So rather than, you know, our immediate concern might be Tenny Mountain Highway and the development there versus the entire town and the whole master plan, maybe that might be a good focus for us.
It's a preliminary.
And that will also be able to be used in the master plan. So I don't think we need to vote or anything.
I have a question about that, though.
Why don't you let Mr. Roach first?
So is the corridor plan, can it be part of the master plan eventually, is it two separate?
I think it could be part of the reference.
Yeah.
It is currently, or is it currently? So updating that would seem.
Yeah, it's real important at this, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so any other comments?
Just one, and that is, could we have maps that would show, I've asked for this 20 times and get blown by 21 times, a map on Tenny Mountain Highway to show exactly the location of the lands that can be developed on Tenny Mountain Highway?
I hate to put too much in the planner's lap, but.
Well, we've got some older stuff, John, from the previous master plan. Now that we're members of North Country Council, they have the GIS capacity to do that. So we could contract with them for what, I mean, I do have some small discretionary funds, but if the board, and I agree, felt as part of our look at Tenny Mountain Highway that we need to come up with future land use projec, current future land use projections, you're right, we need to do some data update.
I would think that would be the first thing that you do. What land do we have to work with?
Exactly, yeah. But that'll be part of the update, so that's part of the analysis.
So we need a full report, and what's the date of this?
Pat, could you? Behind you, there's a.
Yeah, it's a second, it's a second. The first thing. It's a second, we will be looking at that plan. That brings us to item number seven, public comments?
The only thing I can say with the public is, I am actually in the process of reviewing, I was reviewing, the review of businesses. the review of businesses that we did back in ninety-five, two thousand, by industry classification sector. And now there's another focused effort, only looking at manufacturing rather than your whole lease, retail, wholesale, those separate. So there are other elements that are afoot that are looking to review what we can do for industry and business in town. And obviously, it would be part of this quarter study. So there are other groups of individuals that are looking at the same line.
All right. Bring us to item number eight. Mr. Kelly?
Don't move.
Remove second. Mr. Runnet? All right. Meeting adjourned, seven oh one.